I'd like to call the August 21st Business Meeting of the Palm Coast City Council to order. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cuff.
Here.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Lyon.
Here.
Mayor Holland is excused. Councilmember Shively has requested that council excuse her due to a health condition.
Okay, and does that require a motion or just consensus?
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend, yes, that the record reflect that council provide clarity and formality with a motion and a second and a vote.
Do we have a motion?
To approve Heidi's absence as excused.
As excused.
As excused, okay. Sure, I'll move. So moved?
I will second.
Okay. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the next item on our agenda is public participation. Anyone that wishes to address the council on any matter has three minutes to do so. If you want to come to the podium and state your name. Yeah, there's no.
Good morning. My name is William Latono. I live at 61 Woodbury Drive here in Palm Coast. I've had for several years now trying to curb the traffic situation on that cut through the street. As many as 300 vehicles a day will cut through coming from the Rs to go over to Pine Lakes or coming back the other way. I know there's a proposal out to take some of the dangerous cut-throughs off of Whiteview. Mr. Landon has been kind enough via email to keep me in touch with what's going on with that project. But if that happens, that'll only cut down about 40 percent of the traffic because the people coming back will still use Woodbury to come back to go over to the Rs. Plus the morning situation. We have no sidewalks. It's a very dangerous road because of the swales. Dangerous for the children to go out to the bus stops. It's been going on for years, but it's gotten worse, especially during season. During, you know, October, November, December. And I gave Ms. Smith these to put in front of you. My idea here is to make Woodbury Drive a dead-end street, stopping it right there at Whiteview. I've talked to several of the neighbors. They all love the idea. It wouldn't hurt anything. Everybody, emergency vehicles, buses can all get in, do what they need to do, come back down Woodbury and right back out again. The difference for us and behind me is an extra mile and a half to go on to Route 1 south. We'd have to go out, go up White Mill onto Whiteview. A very slight inconvenience to do it. So I'm putting that out there. I think it's a great idea. If the city wanted to just abandon the crossovers, they could because they won't be used anymore. So there's also a savings if the city really wanted to. But the big thing here is to give back the street because you can't walk up and down that street. It is just extremely dangerous. The amount of cars is just tremendous. On the backside, I made a little area of the streets, but from everybody I've talked to, everything I see, seems like a great idea for my advantage point, you know, and from the neighbors around me. But I'd like the council to take this under serious consideration if that's possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. I want to say the Sheriff Department did a good job on responding to the detour traffic of Florida Park Drive, the issues that were taking place over there. They responded very quickly and I want to thank them for that. Also want to just ask, what kind of engineering study was actually done on Florida Park Drive to determine that the commercial through traffic would, as far as the weight limit, wouldn't damage the pipes and everything underneath the road? It just seems like we're spending a lot of taxpayer money to repair pipes underneath the road and was proper precaution taken to do that? That's just my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Robin McDonald, Palm Coast. Once again, the city refuses to play nice in the sandbox. We can't get a meeting set up so that the representatives of cities can actually go into the R section and see all of the violations that are not being addressed on a daily and weekly basis. And also, the concrete from wherever that got ripped up and got dumped onto Royal Palm two and a half weeks ago is still there. The mounds of dirt are still there. I want to know today, please, where the concrete came from, whose marching orders was it to dump it there, and how long especially are we going to continue to look at it? Because as you noticed, it's not being dumped in any other section but the R section. So since the city is being uncooperative and doesn't want to do a drive-through so they actually can see the violations, I'm going to make the city's life a lot easier. I'm going to go through the R section and I'm going to write down all of the violations for them and I'm going to present it to code enforcement and then I'll follow up to see if code enforcement is actually going out and addressing the situations. And then I'll bring back a list to the city of my list and their list and let's see whether or not the city is actually doing their job.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Do we have any other speakers? Next speaker.
Morning, Vice Mayor. Members. Madam Clerk. Gentlemen over there on the left. My name is Luke Givens. I'm the Chief Operations Officer and Chief Deputy for the Clerk of the Court. I believe you all have in front of you some flyers that were passed out to you and in hopes that we could spread the word for these legal clinics that we're hosting in September. It's going to be, as you can see, most of the Wednesdays in September. I think this is our second year in doing this. Last year we did this and it was very well received. It's open to the public. As I said, it's free and we would appreciate any support that you can show the Clerk's office. And speaking of the Clerk's office, Mr. Bexley apologizes for not being here. He's unavoidably detained elsewhere, but he sent me in his stead and wishes you all the best. I'll be glad to entertain any questions if you have any.
Don't, I think we can address that later, Mr. Givens, but thank you for, thank you for coming in with this information. Do we have any other speakers at this point? If not, I will close public participation. As far as staff addressing any of the first three speakers. Mr. Landon, have we, has the study that we've been doing on the Whiteview improvements included any consideration of, you know, following the recommendation, you know, following the suggestion of the first speaker or?
The preliminary design, it's not finished yet, but as you know, we are in design phase, is definitely to block the island, the median cut so that people could not turn left into Woodbury. Yeah, but so at that point, in order to get to Woodbury, they would have to go down and do a U-turn. It would be a whole lot more convenient for them to use a correct street because the gentleman was correct that it should be White Mill, which doesn't have any houses on it. So that's our goal. That's one of our goals in that whole area. So we think that the design will alleviate the cut-through traffic that they're experiencing today. Maybe not totally, but a vast majority of it. I can, if you'd like, I can address the other.
The second, and the second comment on Florida Park Drive. As far as I know, Florida Park Drive wasn't designed by the city. We've been maintaining it over the last number of years.
All our streets at one time or another have a semi-truck, whether that's a moving van or something that's heavy on it and can handle them temporarily. So it's not an ideal situation. The biggest problem is turning radiuses and anytime we have problems with turning radiuses with damage to property, we always repair that when the detour is finished and we'll do the same. If you hear from any residents that had any mailboxes knocked down by a truck turning or, you know, other property damage, let us know. We'll take care of it.
Has there been any damage to the infrastructure, the piping under the roads or anything as a result of over excessive weight on the road?
Not that I've heard of.
And as far as Mr. McDonald's comments on the R section, I assume staff has been instructed to meet with him or to take appropriate action?
We've met with them numerous times.
Yeah.
So I can't address the debris that's been dumped on.
I did see something in email about the concrete.
That is our, the city project to replace pipes. And yes, we have authorized them to use that kind of as a staging area there. One of the pipes that is being replaced is right there on Royal Palm, under Royal Palm. So yes, that is authorized by one of our contractors. It will be done in a few weeks.
Is any, okay, I was just going to say, is any update on the possible schedule for how long?
I didn't come with one, but I believe it was about a two-month project. So, you know, a few more weeks.
Okay.
And then as far as the request from the County Clerk of the Court, absolutely, we'd be happy to work with them to get out the word and do whatever we can to try to spread, spread the news. Very positive program that Cindy in the back will work with the Clerk of the Court to do whatever we can do to help.
Well, I, just a, you know, personal professional aside, I think this is something we all should support and try to get the word out. I know there's been periods where the Flagler Bar, Flagler County Bar Association has provided pro bono lawyers for these clinics and there was sort of a falloff a few years ago and we haven't had them for a while. But it is a great resource for people who need legal advice and are afraid to approach lawyers because they think we charge too much, which my bookkeeper swears to me I don't, but that's another story. This isn't a commercial. I think it is a great project and what we can do to make the public aware of it is a community service for sure. So, okay. Thank you, Mr. Givens. The, moving on to item one on the agenda, we have approval of minutes for the City Council Business Meeting of August 7th and October, October, just seems that way, August 14th workshop.
We have approval for City Council Minutes of August 7th and our August 14th Business Meeting Workshop?
Second. Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. The item number two on the agenda is a second reading of an ordinance regarding Chapter 42 of our code. I'll turn this over to Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida. Amending Chapter 42 Streets, Roads and Bridges in Other Public Places, Article 2, Rights of Way Utilization, Code Enforces of the City of Palm Coast. Amending Section 4246 Utility or Stormwater Crossings to require utility lines to be buried and maintained in a minimum depth of 24 inches. Amending Section 4247 Construction Standards to require repair of damaged utility lines and reinstallment at the required minimum depth, providing for severability, providing for codification conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Mayor, City Council, this is a second reading of the ordinance that is really designed to alleviate the problem where we have with our swales and maintenance. We're not digging. We're actually just actually regrading and we're running into lines that are not buried at all or just put underneath the surface of the grass. This meets regular utility standards of requiring those lines to be buried two feet, maintained at that level. It helps us as far as if we do hit them, because we will hit them and, I mean, neighbors or residents hit them when they bury a bush or plant a bush. And so we're encouraging adoption of this ordinance. We believe it's ready for final adoption.
Any discussion or questions from anybody on the council? Okay, and is there any member of the public that wishes to speak to this item? Seeing no one approached the podium, I'll bring it back to the council. Do we have a motion or further discussion?
Further discussion? Move of approval for the ordinance amending Chapter 42 Streets, Roads, Bridges and Other Public Places relating to utility lines and public rights of way.
Okay, do we second? Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the item passes. Item number three, I'm a little concerned at what will happen if anything catches fire in the next 20 minutes or so.
If it's here.
Here, we're good. That's all I can say. No, I, I'm sorry. It's just, it's always good to see a turnout like this. And I assume they're all here for item three.
Yes.
Which is a resolution approving an interlocal agreement with Flagler County School Board for the donation of fire equipment. Mr. Landon?
Yep. Vice Mayor, Council, this is, this is a very exciting moment for me, something I'm very proud of. You know, one of the career highlights I have, and I've had a very long career, is our internship program where we've worked with Flagler Schools to provide opportunities for young people to come back to work here at the city. And part of that is in the Fire Department. And Fire Department under the leadership of Mr. Deputy Chief Forte, Jerry Forte, he actually took this project and ran with it. And it became more than just an internship program. It became basically from high school all the way to retirement kind of program. And very, very proud of what we've accomplished here and we've done it with the support of a particular FPC where they have an academy. I'm going to, I'm going to let Jerry tell the complete story and then I'd ask that, I have a few moments to wrap up at the end. So Jerry, take it from here. They're giving you three minutes, but I will make an exception on this because of all our guests, I see.
Yeah, they have a reset button on that. Thank you, Mr. Landon. Mr. Vice Mayor, Council, what's before you today is an interlocal agreement between City of Palm Coast and Flagler County School District with regards to interlocal agreement for donation of surplus material. What surplus is considered could be anything from bunker gear to air packs to anything that we find is deemed as surplus. It's deemed surplus for a few reasons. Either it's reached its end of life with National Fire Protection Agency recommendations for not being able to be used in a frontline capacity or we've got standards set up in the City of Palm Coast that we've reached the end of life for that particular product and we can no longer use that either in a frontline or a backup capacity. That's the case with the equipment that's coming before you today is a fire truck from 2004 Kenworth. We've had this discussion in the past on it's reached its end of life. We've got a, every two years we get a new fire truck because it's part of our replacement cycle. With the five stations, we've always got a truck on order. The following year, it's delivered. We send the frontline truck to backup status for volunteers to use and then that truck gets retired. It just so happens we're at a point where FPC is in a position that they can use a fire truck. We are in the position that we're getting rid of a truck or surplusing it and it makes common sense that we can send this truck to FPC for them to use in the duration for their training programs for Fire One and EMS. This is basically a cleanup of some material. We have a change in the ILA from two years ago that we wrote. It's being rewritten to address the current conditions of what we can provide and what we can't provide. And the ILA will explain that if you've read it through. The parties will terminate the interlocal agreement that was recorded in 2016 and this will replace the old one. In Palm Coast, from time to time, we'll exchange equipment as declared as surplus. The agreement will be effect, have the date of execution and the parties will continue until April of 2001 and this, this will continue year after year until one of the parties declares that it's no longer valid. Palm Coast Fire Department will allow the students in the FPC program to participate in the Fire Department's ride-along program through written approval of their parents so that they can participate. This is a catalyst for why the, this program is so important for the Fire Department. Since January, FPC students have rode 970 hours since the beginning of the year up until July 30. That's recorded hours that we track for the amount of students that are riding along. And this, this is recorded and we keep it for longevity because at some point the volunteers will be accepting the interns from FPC as part of their program. Why this is so important is our succession plan is based off of teaching the people that are below us how to do our job. And we've got a plan in place with the intern program that's been very successful. Behind me today, we've got five of our interns that have been hired. If we can ask those who have been hired in the last two years to stand. Okay, those who are missing are Damiano Fortunato and Patrick Giuliano. Giuliano's on duty today and Fortunato is actually in paramedic school. Thank you. We've also got interns that are actually in the program today that are expected to be hired within the next year because of the retirement program that we have. We're expecting openings. And what better way to hire people than to see them before they get hired so we have a good assessment of how they perform, what their capabilities are and what their limitations are and in the process, we can help them get to a point where they can be able to serve the community a lot better. So if we can get current interns that are in the program. Kaitlin Douglas, who is going to be hired in December, just graduated from Metansus, which, sorry Coach, but she's from Metansus. We already know she's going to get hired in December because the points that are valued when she's doing all her ride-alongs in her education are based off of time and longevity. We're going to have an opening in September when Lieutenant, one of the lieutenants moves into the captain inspector position. We already know Brandon Davis is another one of our intern not present today who's going to take that position. These folks have been working with our career staff for the better part of a year. So they've got one-on-one mentoring that goes on between the career lieutenant and the intern to get them ready. All the work that is done by a rookie firefighter within the first year is done before they get hired as an intern. So by the time they get hired on, they're all ready to go. They don't have to worry about clearing as a rookie. We know what their talents are and what their capabilities are before they get hired. Thank you. And lastly, when I get done, I'd like to bring up Mr. Dusty Sims from the FPC Academy and Carrie Sands, who's a vice principal. And I'd also like to have Lieutenant Andy Kepler come up if they could come up and say a few words. This program is integral in making our department a success. Right now, we're looking at people from the community to come in and start our, start into our program so that we can train them off to be career firefighters. This is important because when we lose an employee and they're gone for a shift, it costs $350 in overtime. It takes about two months to replace them. So you're looking at $7,000 just in cost to replace a person on overtime to fill a vacancy. And because we've got the intern program, the turnaround time is two weeks. They're already on duty. They already have uniforms. They've got bunker gear. They have everything they need to be a successful candidate. We just need to get them two weeks notice so they can put notice into their current job and move into the Fire Department. This is extremely successful and we've been saving about $1,500 a month just by sending folks to the academy and reverting the money that we were sending to overtime towards tuition. How the FPC program comes into play is when they get done with the program through Lieutenant Kepler, they're ready to go. They're already certified. We don't have to spend that much money on tuition and training. When they arrive, they've already got all the tools that they need to start a job and they'll enter the program. So for that, I really appreciate what's going on with the academy and for us to donate equipment to a program that's actually going to be proving dividends to our return in the future is a catalyst for our success. So at this time, I'd like you to consider to approve the ILA for this year, for the ongoing work with the school board and bring up Dusty Sims, Carrie Sands and Lieutenant Kepler if they'd like to say a few words about their program and tell us what they do to make it a success.
Dusty, bring, bring with you the other students that have those green Bulldog shirts on.
Bulldogs only.
Unless you're from Metansus, in which case you're already hired.
Exactly.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, City Council, Mr. Landon, Mr. Reichman. Thank you for the opportunity to say a few words today. I just want to thank the city for your continued support of the Flagler Palm Coast High School Fire Leadership Academy. And we call it a Leadership Academy because we truly believe that at FPC that we are recreating the next generation of leaders in our community. And, and the Fire Academy is one of those opportunities that they have to recreate leaders. And these young men and young women each and every day are getting opportunities in the schoolhouse that would not have been afforded to them had the opportunity that the Flagler County Fire Department, the City of Palm Coast partnership with Flagler Palm Coast High School has afforded them. I think education's much different than when we went to school in our day and age and we at FPC constantly strive to try to develop individualized learning opportunities. It was once said that Flagler County Schools was Flagler County's greatest export, that students would come through school, they would go off to college, go off to training facilities and never return back to Flagler County. It has been our vision for the past four years to create individual learning opportunities that not just get kids excited about learning and wanting to come to school every day, but kids would be excited about living in Flagler County, finding their Florida in Palm Coast and making sure that they're going to stay here, work here and raise their families here. And the Fire Leadership Academy is one of those opportunities that is providing that for them. And I just want to say thank you to them. Ms. Carrie Sands, she's the one that's done all the hard work behind the, the legwork behind it. I don't know, Carrie, if you have anything you want to add to that?
I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to have that fire truck. I think that would be a great addition to our academy and the kids are very excited about that and for your continued support, we appreciate it.
And I say this all the time and I'm going to give him a chance to speak, but it, when we started the Fire Academy a year, two, almost two years ago now, and over two years in the planning stages, we knew from the beginning it was going to take a very, very special person to lead that group of kids. That they couldn't come in there just as a firefighter. They had to come in there as a mentor, an educator, a friend at times and someone to help these kids really be trained. Lieutenant Andrew Kepler was, I told him he missed his calling. He's an amazing firefighter, but he's an even more amazing educator. And so without Lieutenant Kepler's guidance and lead down there, this program could have quickly fallen apart. He has grown it. He's built trust and confidence in these young people and when you walk in the room, you just feel that from the kids. So I would like to just give Mr. Lieutenant Kepler an opportunity as well.
Thank you and good morning. Lieutenant Andrew Kepler, Palm Coast Fire Rescue. This is. Flagler County Fire Rescue, sorry. My apologies. I'm not a, I'm not a big public speaker. I speak in front of the students and that's about it. The special thing about this is, is I'm an FPC graduate of the mid 90s and Chief Forte was actually one of my instructors going through fire school while I was in high school at FPC. So I think it gives me a unique opportunity because I've sat in the same seats as these students. So I think I can relate to them the best. I want to thank Palm Coast Fire Department for donating the fire engine for the academy. It allows us to further their education. We're pretty much limited to really nothing now, now that we have this fire engine. So I want to thank the City of Palm Coast. I want to thank the City of Palm Coast Fire Department and FPC and thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, we're asking consideration for passage of this amendment, item number three at your convenience.
Well, I've got, can I just ask you a question? I know the program's not long enough to have really strong statistics here, but does, how many people have gone through this program who've not gone into firefighting?
This is our first graduating classes this year.
Oh, okay.
So all of them will be going to fire.
Thank you. Well, I have to say, I have looked into this. I think it is a fantastic program. It helps not only our community as, as. It helps not only our community as assistant, Deputy Chief Forte has said, insofar as protecting our community and helping build up our Fire Department, but also, as the vice principal said, building leadership. I mean, these are skills that will carry you a long way. And wherever you go, here or elsewhere in firefighting or anything else, going through a program like this will prepare you in ways you cannot imagine. I think it's a wonderful program, and I'm glad we have the opportunity to do this agreement whereby that fire truck will go, or I would support that fire truck going to the school and providing that educational tool.
Our main goal for this is keep them local. We lost a lot of people years ago to other agencies, basically where they came from. And by doing this and getting them into an intern program that is local, their local residence, their family lives here, their parents live here, hopefully they buy a house and pay some taxes here, that'd be great. They get to a point where they set roots down in Palm Coast, and we're no longer that springboard for another department someplace else. Our retention rates in the last two and a half years has been 100%. That's pretty good. We've never lost a new recruit or a new candidate that was out of the intern program. And the last group of people that left, left because of retirement. And that's not a bad way for having an opening. The idea is, if, give them the opportunity that when they live here in Palm Coast, there's no reason to go anyplace else.
Any other, thank you, Mr. Forte. Do we have any other staff input on the?
I would like to make some final comments. I'm going to ask Chief Beetle to come up and join the group up here.
Put your hat on, chief.
Up here, I got, you know, I have a very strong relationship with Dusty Sims. It's been almost emotional for me. I apologize for that, but it's, it's been great, Dusty, and this is, phew, I didn't know I was going to get emotional. I knew it was going to be special. So, Dusty, it's been, been great. I wish you the best. Fact of it is, this type of program is not common. This isn't easy to do. It has taken a lot of hard work. Ms. Sands, I appreciate the hard work and working with us. The easy thing to do is do what you always do. You know, kids go to school, and we do our thing in the Fire Department. The difficult thing is, is take that extra step and really do the classroom-to-career program to a different level, and really appreciate that. I can't say enough about Deputy Forte and what he's done, but also, it's under the leadership of Chief Beetle. I have had many conversations with the two of them about the fact that our old program, we'd hire people from Jacksonville, Orlando, you know, who knows where. They'd get four or five years in, get good experience. We're a great training ground, then they go back to their community and work for the Fire Department and their community. And so to turn that around, we came up with our own internal program you just heard about. And so it really has been very, very special. Something that I have watched Deputy Forte, under Chief Beetle's leadership, really blossom. I think everybody knows that the chief is calling it, well, he's going to buy a coach and travel around the country.
Bought it already.
Here in next month. And it's been a great program that he's put together to, not just with Chief Forte, but some of the other career individuals who are retiring and succession plan and trying to build a career for everybody in our Fire Department that would like to stay. So, young people, you have a long career, longstanding program here that I think you could be very proud of as you move into the career position. With that said, I don't think this is any surprise, but I would like to formally announce what everybody is expecting, and that is that I am officially appointing Deputy Chief Forte, Jerry Forte, as our next Fire Chief. Thank you. And once again, one of the proudest moments in my career, thank you all.
Thank you. I guess it's, I guess it's going around today. Thank you, Mr. Landon. It's been an honor and a privilege to work with my friend, my mentor, my brother, Mike, who we're going to miss a lot.
Let me help out. Let's have a photo op out by the red fire truck.
Can I, I'll just put the motion on the floor that we approved before the photo op, that we approved the interlocal agreement with Flagler County School Board for the donation of fire equipment?
And does any member of the public have any input on the resolution before we bring it back to the council? If not, I'll entertain Mr. Lyons' motion. My only discussion on the subject would be that I was dead-set opposed to this until I came here this morning, but you all talked me into it, so. If there's no further discussion on the motion, do we have a second?
A second, and I would third if I could.
Okay. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone who's opposed, come see me after the meeting. The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Chief.
You're dying to say a few more words, and I cut you off, so.
He has been in my life for the last 30 years, in the great times and even in the most difficult times. And no one knows how much he means to everybody in our department, and the legacy that he's leaving behind is in the employees and the people that are here because they want to be here. And I just can't thank him enough for the example he set. So, thank you.
He's still your boss for how many more days, chief?
Eighteen. Eighteen. Vice Mayor, if I could suggest that, you know, we've got a nice logo. We branded it for FPC. If we take kind of an unusual photo opportunity and go outside with the truck to take a picture with, if you don't mind?
Second that? Can we?
Okay.
Yeah, probably want to just, for formality, let's go ahead and do a recess.
We wanted to, yeah, let's do a, let's do a 10-minute recess, and anyone who wants to have their picture taken with a neat fire truck, meet us out front.
Best recess ever.
I'd like to call the meeting back to order and thank the members of the public that stuck with us through that and for their indulgence. My uncle was a Fire Chief up north, so he taught me never to miss an opportunity to have your picture taken with a fire truck and a bunch of firefighters. But I think we can all agree, that was one of the better resolutions we have done recently. But moving on with the meeting, item number four is a resolution approving amendments to the State Housing Initiative's partnership ship program, Local Housing Assistance Plan. Mr. Landon?
Vice Mayor, City Council, this is a state housing program that we're actually eligible to receive dollars directly, but a lot more efficient to cooperate or coordinate with Flagler County, who also has a housing program with the same funding source. So we pool our dollars. The county has been operating this program for many years, and we believe they're doing an excellent job. And this resolution is just updates the program as required by changes in state law and other kind of housekeeping items. Because the portion of the dollars are Palm Coast dollars, the city council is required to approve any of these kind of changes. Once again, we think it's just a housekeeping boilerplate. It's a good program and a good relationship with Flagler County, and would encourage you to adopt the resolution.
Any discussion or comment by council before we open it up to the public? If not, if any member of the public wishes to address this item on the agenda, please come to the podium. Seeing no one, we'll take it back to the council for discussion or motion.
Seeing no discussion, move of approval? Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous approval? I would like to say, this is a wonderful program. It's not nearly as expansive as it maybe should be, but I'm familiar with it primarily through its years of support for the Flagler Habitat for Humanity homeowners, and a lot of these dollars do wind up here in Palm Coast in the form of support for hard-working families that otherwise wouldn't be able to be property owners and pay their taxes and spend their salaries here in Palm Coast and Flagler County. So, item number five is a resolution adopting the final nuisance abatement assessment. Mr. Landon?
Vice Mayor, City Council, this is the annual process in which we submit to the tax collector's office the liens for property in which people have not been maintaining to, the property owners have not been maintaining it to city standards. So we hire a contractor to mow the lawn, do other miscellaneous maintenance. They give, they're given an opportunity to pay the bill. If they don't, then we add it to their tax bill. This resolution authorizes us to send those assessments to Flagler County prop, tax collector. In this case, you first have to hear from the public before we can do that. So that's why it's a, it's really a public hearing. But we believe it's ready to go on for final adoption. Excuse me.
Okay. Any discussion or questions from council on the item?
I'm hopeful that this will expedite some of the results that we see from code enforcement, so I'm all about it. I think that's great.
Okay. Is there any member of the public that would like to address this item? So please come forward. Three minutes.
Good morning. Good morning. Mr. Nealbaum from the R Section. I want to thank the council for adopting this. And I had a neighbor from hell, they're gone, thanks to legal assistance of the city. And I wish that this ordinance was a little bit more expensive for the people that are the evaluators, because it does bring down property values and, in some cases, undesirables, drug addicts and things like that, people you don't want, thieves. Our section, the sheriff's, recently just busted some people that were criminals and stealing. These kind of things are good to see that the sheriff's department and the city are doing something to alleviate these problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other member of the public wishes to address this item? Seeing no one approaching the podium, we'll bring it back to the council for further discussion or a motion.
Move of approval? Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimously adopted. Opposed, unanimously adopted. Item number six is a resolution approving the Old Kings Road special assessment role for transmittal to the Flagler County tax collector. Mr. Landon?
This is another annual housekeeping item. This is the special assessment for Old Kings Road between State Road 100 and Palm Coast Parkway, something that the property owners along that stretch of Old Kings Road have voluntarily agreed to assess themselves with additional tax dollars to pay for the improvements. Each year, we have to actually send the assessment to the Flagler County tax collector after a public hearing, and so this accomplishes that today. We believe it's ready for final action.
Any discussion or questions for staff from the council? If not, any member of the public that wishes to address this item, please come forward and do so at this time. Seeing no one from the public, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion or a motion.
Move of approval?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed. Passes unanimously. Item number seven, resolution approving a modification to the agreement with the University of Central Florida for the Business Assistance Center. Mr. Landon?
This was not on your workshop agenda, and that's why we, we have it under resolutions and not consent. This is our annual contract with the University of Central Florida for our partnership with the Small Business Development Center. We refer to it as the BAC, or Business Assistance Center here in City Hall. It's a great program. The only change in the contract is a three percent increase, which is allowed under the, under the contract. So we would encourage you to renew our agreement with the University of Central Florida.
Okay. Any discussion or questions from council on the item?
I just want to say, I'm always impressed every week when I read the week, week in review, and I see how the BAC is impacting our local community.
Yeah.
It's a good program.
Yeah. If, if anything, I, my only comment would be that it's another, I think, underappreciated resource that the city is able to offer. So I hope we'll do what we can, or more than, more than we've been doing, to make sure that folks that are interested in the services they can provide, take advantage of this.
If I may, just saw some emails that are consistent with that. You know, when we have a new resident sign up for water service, we send them an email, welcome to Palm Coast and some information. They're developing the same type of thing for businesses, and that will then help introduce new businesses to the BAC. So we are going to try to reach out and, and make sure that the businesses are aware of the service it's providing.
No further council discussion. If there's any member of the public that wishes to address city council on this resolution, please do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for a motion.
Move of approval?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. The resolution is adopted unanimously. Next item is the consent agenda, items eight, nine, and 10. If any member of the council wants to address any of these items separately, or if any member of the public would like to address one of these items on the consent agenda, please let us know now.
I, I, sorry, I had a question that I, about a resolution, I remember nine. It's just a simple question, I don't even know if I need to pull it out for that. I, I just, it, it says that the, it's to replace an existing tower, but then it says that revenue from the existing tower continues to come, but there won't be an existing tower, so it seemed an inconsistency to me.
Gotcha. They're taking the equipment off the one, putting it onto the other.
Right. So the existing tower we have there doesn't handle the type of equipment necessary for 5G and, and really a better coverage that we're obviously striving for. So the, the new tower will go up right next to it, they will take the equipment off of the existing tower, the old tower, put it onto the new tower, and, and we won't count that as new antennas. Under our agreement with Diamond, new antennas, they get 60% of the revenue, we get 40% because they build the tower. In this case, we get 100% of the two existing that they're transferring over. Any new antennas would be the, the 60-40 split.
Okay, so it's 100% from the existing services on, attached to, from the services attached to the existing tower that are transferring over to the new tower.
Right. So the city is going to make the same revenue we are today, so this doesn't change our revenue flow whatsoever. Actually, we should increase it, because one of the reasons for this is AT&T is not on the tower, and they've indicated that with the, the new tower, that they would be a third carrier on that, on that particular, at that particular location. So that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Which, if I could give another update, since we're talking about it, the, the building permit is in final review for the tower at Water Plant One, there at Palm Coast Parkway and, and Bel Air. So we should see constructions begin there within the next few weeks. That will make a major difference in that area. We know that AT&T has already agreed to put antennas there. We anticipate the others, as soon as it's up, will be very interested in that location.
As an AT&T customer, who gets no service at the library, I'm glad to see that.
You, you will get full bars at the library when this is finished.
Any further discussion or questions on the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion?
Move of approval of the consent agenda?
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. None. Consent agenda is adopted. Next item on the agenda is the second half of public participation. If anyone who is from the public here, when wishes to address the council on any issues, please come forward, and you'll have three minutes to do so. State your name and residents.
Good morning. George Mayo. Number one, I personally would like to thank Chief Beetle for his service to the city. I know he means a lot. I've asked before that the new fire truck be named in his honor. I think that would be good recognition for future firefighters to remember who he is, and I want to wish the same continued success to new Chief Forte. Thank you very much for them. The other thing is, south of 100, on Bel Air, off Bel Air, cell service is pretty sketchy. I wonder if there are any new cell towers in that general vicinity to help cell service, if they're in the works, if anything is coming up immediately, or to help with the situation there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Any other member of the public wishes to address the council?
Hello again, Mr. Nealbaum, R section. I've been listening to the gentleman from Florida Park Drive for a year now. I've talked to him offline a few times, and I see that he's basically being ignored, and that's not fair. Florida Park Drive is a residential area, supposed to be a residential area. It's a 30 mile an hour limit thoroughfare. You've got cement trucks and all the kind of trucks going through there as a shortcut. Something needs to be done. Please take it into consideration, you found 1.8 million dollars to redesign a non-residential road. You should be able to find some money and some solution to this problem. It's been going on for over four years. I've only been here a year, and he talks, he talks, he makes you aware. From what I see, he's totally being ignored. That's not fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wishes to address the council? If not, we will close public participation. I'm sure that the chief appreciates Mr. Mayo's comments. I'm not sure, we should probably name something after him. I'm not sure if a truck is the right. We'll find, we'll think of something, maybe, maybe get a commemorative hat or something for him.
Wastewater Treatment Plan Number Two.
Well, whatever, but we'll, we'll see. But no, I appreciate, I appreciate the suggestion, but given the chief's fabled modesty, I, I don't know exactly what we're going to be able to do. Maybe the new chief can help us think of something. Well, that's, that was my thought, but that's, we'll, we'll talk about that. The, the issue on cellphone coverage south of 100 on the, in the Bel Air area, I know that's a pretty weak zone from personal experience.
We, hopefully, the, the new tower that you just approved the lease for on Bel Air, north of 100 will help, because it will make the coverage better throughout because of the new technology. Other than that, I do not know of any plans of any carriers planning to do anything within the city limits. I do know that there are some larger towers on our orders that there might be some improvements being planned, but not within Palm Coast, that I know of.
I, I may not be the citizen that not realize, because I didn't either exactly where that tower that we just approved is going. I, you know, I looked up for, realized where the existing tower is, but I think that will, that is much closer to 100 than people realize.
Right. Yes, I think it will. It's Tennis Center Fire Station, right there, Bel Air.
Do we, do we have any, I know in, in our cell improvement plan, we identified some possible sites for essentially pre-permitting or expedited permitting. Do we have any down in that?
Yes, we do. And we presented those to the carriers, and the carriers evaluate them as to what their plans are. And this is one that I have not heard of any, that they plan on. In other words, their information says that they're not needed at this time. A lot of it has to do with volume, you know, and how many customers that they have in a given area.
Then the, the further comments on Florida Park Drive, I know as, as a member of the council, it's a frustrating situation for me too, and I don't, I certainly don't think that it's the council's intention to ignore the, the reports and the complaints that we hear about this, but what can practically speaking be done has always been an issue, and I know we've talked about it a number of times. Do you have anything further to?
The gentleman may feel like we're ignoring, but we have spent years addressing it, and have done studies and looked at it, and it is just not a, an easy solution. What you're seeing right, right now with the detour, as soon as you try to block it off, traffic is going to go somewhere, and, and so you're just going to shift it. We have done law enforcement efforts, we've put up the, the speed signs. The trucks, if we find any of them that are actually just using it as a cut through for deliveries, Marcus talked to those businesses. Most of the trucks out there are delivering things, you know, like concrete trucks, it's because of the construction in that neighborhood. You can't tell them they can't use it to get there. And so we've had those issues. But we have not ignored this issue whatsoever. We have spent hours and hours addressing it. It's just not a good solution.
Is there, and this may be, this is something we need to discuss, I think, further, or, but I've read about efforts on the part of some neighborhoods to, I don't know what the correct term is, but basically mark certain residential streets as not for commercial through traffic on, online services such as Waze and, you know, other GPS related services. Has there ever been any? I, I know the putting up a no-through truck sign is, it is, it's, I mean, I, we'd like to do that, but basically it's a waste of a sign, because it's not going to stop anybody unless law enforcement can establish. But have we looked at the, you know, the, the routing services that are available online, whether there's anything we could do with that?
Good. Yes, just to confirm, and Mark will, will confirm, that state law won't allow us to try to enforce no-through trucks on, on the street. So to put up a sign that's unenforceable is, is just, you know, violates all principles of, of traffic. Now, Mr. Cuff, your con, concept of GPS and attempt to use that as a message of please don't use this as a, a through street for trucks, that one's a new concept. We can take a look at, at that idea and see if the, if there is something we can do with the Google Maps.
When, when you have me proposing an IT solution to a problem, it's, it's probably a bad idea, but I have read of a couple of neighborhoods in other states that have, have tried that, and whether it's practical, doable, legal.
We can definitely look into it. I, I like creative ideas, and if we can keep people from using it just because they use it to, because that's where the GPS tells them to go, we've all done that before, that, that's worthwhile looking at.
Mr. Landon, we can revisit it, but again, as Ms. Landon said, I, I don't want Mr. Carr thinking he's been ignored. I, it's been longer than this kind of situation, it's been more than four years I've looked into this. And I constantly keep updated with DOT and their regulations about the law, legality about these trucks coming through, and we can't stop them, as Mr. Landon said, if they're doing a business. So to put in a sign up wouldn't work. I could check with them again, see if they have anything coming up, but I don't think so. I mean, and this is, it, it's been done on other studies than just Florida Park Drive. We've had this brought up before.
Our, our trucks specifically, the, the issue, I believe the gentleman would bring up just the level of traffic was the biggest complaint, since I've been here.
We've, we've heard both, and looked at both of them real hard. And, you know, once again, if we know you've got a Pepsi truck that's going Florida Park Drive to get to one of the convenience stores, we'll ask them to, to take a different route, but it's not enforceable to write them a citation, but we have done that. Particularly if they're coming off of I-95, the idea that they can use Metanza's now, a new route that GPS may not have, that would be very helpful. And we've talked to the stores multiple times on those. So, you know, once again, it's not a lack of, of trying, but when we do, and we've had videos of all the trucks trying to determine what the trucks are, most of them are construction or delivery, and, that are going to, you know, the residents' houses or a construction site in the neighborhood. And obviously, they have the right to, it's the only way they can get there.
Mr. Cuff, we have talked to the stores, that may work for a couple of days, and then they'll, they'll cut through. I will tell you what, you won't see city trucks using it as a cut through. So what we got control of, we take care of.
What about the county trucks? I'm just kidding.
I'll defer that to the fire chiefs.
I can guarantee you, the fire trucks are more than welcome to use it when they need to.
Too cold to sanction, cut Florida Park in half is pretty much the only option to eliminate through traffic, and I think we would have quite a bit of blowback for that.
Right. Well, if you, if you block the road, you either have the even smaller side roads, like we're doing with the detour now, or you have, you know, a rebellion from the neighborhoods that are to the north or south that are saying, this is the only way to get to Palm Coast Parkway to, to Palm Harbor.
If you were to block, because we've looked at it, that was an option we looked at, but there are definitely routes that people can still take, but they're just going to be a, another residential street. And when we have the detour, you've heard the response of what happens, and that's, to, to do that permanently, you're just shifting the problem, you're not solving a problem.
And we did, we did, at the council's request, send some extra deputies down there during this detour, and as Mr. Carr said, he appreciated. So, good try, boss.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you, Commander. Okay, anything? Next item on the agenda is discussion of city council matters not on the agenda. Start with District Four and work our way.
I don't have anything added to the agenda.
East, okay. Mr. Kalufus?
I have one thing, and it's about the TPO meeting, and I think Mr. Landon was going to bring it up, but I'm unable to attend tomorrow's TPO meeting, and it's at 9:00 a.m. at Daytona, and that's the second consecutive that I haven't been able to attend since I was appointed. The first one was due to travel, but I have the corporate overlords in the office this week, so we have mandatory meetings tomorrow. I'm not sure how this will affect the eligibility of my, the TPO status that I have, being appointed to the board, but also the fact that we're requesting additional funds tomorrow. I'm going to specifically reach out to Lois myself to ensure that she understands the magnitude of why I have to be absent from the meeting, but I wanted to explain it to you guys, myself, rather than via email.
If, they will allow us to have an alternate, if we, we put in writing that the city council is desiging an alternate. So if the other two of you have, could make the meeting, because we do have a, a funding request on the agenda, it would, would be a good thing, if you're available at late notice.
What, what time is the meeting?
And I think it's a maximum of an hour and a half meeting.
I, well, I, I hold up my hand, but I'm under subpoena to appear at a trial that's supposed to start at nine o'clock tomorrow morning here in Vanel, so I, Mr. Lyons?
I, I have just a Chamber of Commerce meeting that I
I, I have just a Chamber of Commerce meeting that I could skip.
Yeah, this one would be much more important between the two.
I would be incredibly appreciative, forever indebted.
Daytona at what time?
9:00 AM. It's at the, it's near the International Speedway. It's the office buildings next to it.
You could do this, a quick motion to, to appoint Mr. Lyon as a temporary alternate. It would be helpful.
Yes, I will make a motion to appoint Mr. Lyon as a temporary alternate to the TPO board.
I'd second it.
Don't have much choice, but I, okay, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Vincent.
So designated. Thank you.
Mr. Lyon, our, our staff member is Jose Papa. He'll make contact with you, hopefully immediately after this, or sometime today, give you the background, the briefing on, on all that.
Was here earlier.
Yeah, I saw.
I was around.
Okay. And I, I have nothing, nothing for this agenda. Next item is discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Nothing, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay. And item last is discussion by city manager of items not on the agenda.
One little follow-up real quick. I just got the notice here that we have issued the permit, or it's ready to be picked up for the tower at Water Plant One, so be looking forward to that. Construction started. Food Truck Tuesday tonight starts at five o'clock. It benefits a walk to end Alzheimer's, so good, good, good cause. Good program, good, good cause, so hopefully people can come out to Food Truck Tuesday tonight, right here at Central Park.
When, if I can just ask, when you say benefits them, and I understand there's always a charitable beneficiary, how do they actually get, what, what is the mechanism by which they receive some benefit from that?
We, uh, we collect a, a fee from the vendors. They all have to provide a, a fee, and the proceeds for that goes to the beneficiary, I believe is, is, is how that works. We, we keep a small portion of it to pay some of our costs. We also contribute to the program.
Not related to the vendor's food sales? It's a, just their permit to use the?
It's just per truck, it's a per, per truck fee. And then the beneficiaries are the ones that are asked to bring in entertainment, do something that provides music or something.
Thank you.
So it's a good partnership. And then lastly is, you know, the senior games. So those of you that are athletes that qualify to be a senior, month of September, it starts September 7th and goes all the way to the 23rd. Very popular program from.
Thirty, thirty and over, right? Is that the?
Is that the definition of senior?
That was.
Okay. Well, I don't know if everybody's going to agree with that, but, you know, from ballroom dancing to archery to pickleball to, it's amazing that the things that we offer, so that, that's coming up. And that's all I have today.
Justing aside, what is the entry age?
Sixty-five?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
I'll put on a mustache.
Since you can't grow one.
I'm hearing fifty, would you go with forty-five? No, I'm, I think, I think we're at fifty, so.
Forward to that in a couple of years.
Yeah.
Bob, too.
Yeah, no rush.
Now I think we're just bragging.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lyons. Actually, with intercoastal cleanup, is that still scheduled for?
Yes.
Not to add to the?
Yeah. When's the intercoastal cleanup?
It'll be September the eighth.
September 8th.
Okay.
It's a Saturday.
Yeah, that's another.
And we are going to stage at Holland Park or Community Center?
At the Community Center.
At the Community Center this year.
We're actually being endorsed this year with the, um, select.
So September, September 8th, and at the Community Center. Very, very popular event. Get a lot of volunteers coming out doing that.
And, and something as our, as, as civic representatives, something I think is the most important, elections going on now, if you want to, early vote going on next week for the vote, for the primaries.
Yes.
So please get out and vote.
Yeah. Saturday afternoon, 12 polling places, no waiting, at the Flagler County Library on Bel Air. So I don't know about the other early voting sites.
Flagler County Library, the Palm Coast Community Center, and the.
School building.
Yeah, the, the election office in Vanel, the county building.
Want to go right, right to, right to the source, yeah, at the supervisor of elections.
And then next, a week from, two weeks from today, the first Tuesday. My writer, Virginia, help me out, make sure, I don't want to give the wrong information. I wasn't prepared for this. The election day is?
Twenty-eighth.
Next Tuesday, the 28th.
Next Tuesday, the 28th, yes.
Yes, okay. All right. Anything further? If not, do we have a motion that I usually make?
Move that we adjourn?